Thank you, Rob. Okay, we'll call our meeting of our committee to the whole to order this morning. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on this agenda? Counselor Mattresshouse and Counselor Boarden. Counselor Mattresshouse first.
Thank you, Warden. I wish to declare an indirect interest for the open session, item seven E, and the closed session, eight point one regarding the booster station in the town of Blue Mountains. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boarden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, I will be declaring the same interest on seven E and the closed portion eight point one, including the booster station funding for the town of Blue Mountains.
Okay, thank you. Any other declarations? Okay, of course, if one should arise during the meeting, you can declare it at that time. Any business arising per minutes? I don't have any on the agenda here. Okay. We have a delegation this morning, and we have Mr. Jeremy Wentworth Stanley. He's here to speak regarding the TC Energy Proposal. Sir, come on up to the podium. The microphone is yours, sir.
Well, first of all, you said this morning it was ten o'clock somewhere, and I take you up on that because I just got off the plane last night from London after a two-day trip, and Air Canada canceled the return flight. So it was a real treat, but here I am. No, I didn't swim, actually. The most important thing first is to thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I am talking about the TC Energy Project, and what I am addressing, in fact, is not so much the project from an environmental or conservation standpoint, but actually from a financial point of view. Some of you will know that I was in the financial industry for some, my pension statement says fifty-one years. And this is what I'm talking to you now really does base itself on a lot of the history of what I've picked up over those years. TransCanada, and we're going to talk about their balance sheet first. TransCanada, not a lot of people know this. TransCanada, I call it TransCanada Pipeline, which is, in a sense, truthful because a significant share of their business is, in fact, pipelines. They just reported in the last quarter that they had a record shipment of oil. Their balance sheet is triple B rated. That's a third rate rating. Triple B is, in some quarters, is considered junk status. On top of that, they've got sixty-eight billion dollars worth of debt, of which one-third comes due this year. And I don't have to tell anybody that the cost of refinancing that debt is going to be a great deal higher than when they originally started. And to make a point further, that reduction in interest rates isn't likely going to be happening as soon as we thought it would. So there's the TransCanada balance sheet. And your question is, and my question is, what's in it for TransCanada in this project? And the project hinges on one fundamental principle, which is, in economic terms, it's called arbitrage. What that means is you buy it in one market and you sell it in another market. And if you're very clever, you sell it at a low, buy it at a low price and sell it at a high price, and that's exactly what you want to do. And TransCanada, what they're trying to do here is to be able to buy or use cheap electricity at night to push the water up the hill. And when the water comes downhill in the daytime, that will generate expensive electricity. The margin is exactly what they're after. Nothing wrong with that. It's an arbitrage mechanism. It's perfectly reasonable. The problem is that we all know is two things are happening. One is a physical demand for electricity is surging. It's happening because of the way that people are moving away from fossil fuels, but it's also happening because people are getting into the EVs, the electric vehicles, into greenhouses, my case, heat pumps. The list goes on, but the key is this. If you look at your hydro bill, you'll notice there's cheap time and expensive time, low time, high time. That curve is flattening out. And the reason is that we will, in fact, be using electricity on a literally twenty-four-hour basis. So if you use it on a twenty-four-hour basis, what that means is that spread between the high and the low disappears. Markets will do that, so it will become very flat. So from TransCanada's point of view, that is not good economics. So it then raises the question, why is TransCanada pursuing it? And I have two answers for you. One of I particularly like to talk to your issue on the healthcare front, because actually, the only way this can happen is for the federal government or the provincial government to guarantee prices on the in and prices on the out. That's exactly what TransCanada has always done. As a pipeline company, they are a rate-regulated utility. And what that means is they have a certain amount of investment, and the regulator says you can earn a certain amount of money. For them, therefore, to earn a certain amount of money on a project that actually can't make money means that it will have to be subsidized by the various governments. And my question is on this. If you look at the project today, you hear numbers like seven billion dollars being rooted around. I'll give you one example. Trans Mountain Pipe, the one that's just been completed. That started off with a budget of five point seven billion dollars. Last figure was thirty-five billion. So in other words, when we look at projects today, and all major projects suffer from cost overruns. It's no different from when you put in a new kitchen. Why does it always cost three times what you thought it would? And the key here is that the cost of doing this could easily run, I did some back-of-the-envelope calculation. Roughly speaking, you could be looking at somewhere between thirty-five and forty billion dollars for this project. And the reason I'm cornering you is because if I had forty billion dollars to play around with in Ontario, I would think healthcare would be a very fine place to put it first. The second part of this project is that if, in fact, they can get the spread legitimately, so if you were to say to me, no, Jeremy, the prices are going to remain a differential, and therefore, they can make money doing it, the single biggest risk we face is this. TransCanada's balance sheet is stretched. We know that. You can check it out. This project will very likely, once it would be up and running, it's a gold mine for a hedge fund. Hedge funds love this kind of business because what happens is they know they've got a guaranteed in and a guaranteed out, so they basically borrow money at five percent. They know the project's going to yield ten percent, and they sit there reaping the benefit. Hedge funds do one thing, though. They like gravel pits. They go in there and they take out as much as they can. And when they've done that, they leave us to pick up the pieces. Everybody knows this about hedge funds. Hollywood revisited in a way. But the risk is that project then becomes a hedge fund. Now, some of you and some of us have said, but doesn't TransCanada promise us all kinds of benefits from this project? Couple of points. Number one, I hate to tell you, but the corporate promises is a litter bin. I'll give you a classic example that some of you know intimately, was when Bell Canada BCE closed out the radio stations back in February. That was against all the promises that they would ever do that. And I should add, the BCE at one point was a forty-eight percent controlling shareholder of TransCanada. But I think we have to be very intellectually and actually emotionally honest about the characteristics of corporations and how they operate, the checkmates they like to work with, the pieces they move around. The next thing is this, though. A number of promises have been made about money that would be made available to the community, and I think that's great. My former career with CIBC Woodgandy, as some of you know, we did a lot of money, contributed a lot of money into the community. What's important, though, is if we're going to have those promises of ten million, twenty million, whatever those promises are, those sums of money have got to be insured and have to be indemnified. We know that those promises of, yes, we're going to pay you a certain amount of money every year, sounds very attractive. But given the fact that you've got a weak balance sheet, you've got a business model that doesn't make sense, those promises could get watered down very quickly. Therefore, to me, the obvious solution is to gain indemnity, to gain insurance. The catch is, to me, and I'm sharing this with you now, I do not believe that any insurance company would touch this project with a barge pole. The risks are enormous. I'm just talking now strictly from the standpoint of when you dig in the hole in the ground and you bring water in and water out and all that kind of stuff, it's a risk that insurance companies would have a significant difficulty with. So I'm not sure that the indemnity or that kind of guarantee will, in fact, be available. I think, though, one of the things we should do, and I would love you, Mr. Warden, to share this with the other municipalities, is to take the project as it stands, as we've been told, and I realize a lot of it is conjectural, but to take the project and to show it to all the business schools. Take it Queens, take it to the Rothen School of Business in Toronto, take it to the Ivy School in Western, and have the people there look at the project strictly from the integrity standpoint of, does this actually make sense? ICO has already said it is not accretive to the electrical supply. In actual fact, they have pointed out there's a thirty-five percent drop in the net energy used and that is then generated through this process. If there's a thirty-five percent spread in that way, then TransCanada, by definition, is going to need a thirty-five percent spread on its prices in order to make it work. And my question is this. If we're going to give TransCanada that thirty-five percent break, we know, if you look at your hydro bills today, and you look across the spectrum of where people are struggling and so on, that cheap energy belongs to the people of Ontario. It doesn't belong to the shareholders of TransCanada. And if I come from the background I come from and I can say that, I think that's a significant point. My last point is this. Some of you know this. The Canadian banking system is based on Scottish banking principles. And the principle is that the depositor will be protected. That was their fundamental theme. We are the depositors in this community. We're the ones who have invested our lives, our money, our children, grandchildren, our legacy, and so on. We need custodians to look after that investment, and I'm appealing to you. I think the project, frankly, should be shelved. That rests my case.
Thank you, sir. Truly appreciate your time and your words. I guess my first comment would be that I'm surprised that two days in London would generate an accent like yours, but nonetheless. I expected that, yes. Good. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much, sir. We do appreciate your time today and for bringing the information forward that you have, and we will consider it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items in that consent agenda that anyone would like to remove for further discussion? Counselor Greg.
Thank you, Warden. Item six E, please. Towne of Godrich Correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Counselor Apples.
Six I.
Okay, thank you. Any others? All right. I would entertain a motion to receive the balance of the items in the consent agenda. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Hutchison. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Items for direction and discussion. The first is seven A. A report from Grey Roots Museum Archive. It's an update. Jill Patterson is here. Oh, there you are. There you are. Good morning, Jill. Welcome. The floor is yours. Oh, wait, I need to move her in a second, please. Counselor Apples and Counselor Keveney. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Warden and County Council. Can you guys all hear me? Great. And just jumping off the good news and celebrations, May is museum month as well, so what a fitting time. Let's talk about Grey Roots. Okay. So this report will cover performance measures and activities from January to December twenty twenty-three and outline expectations for twenty twenty-four. This serves as the final report for the operating plan that was put together for twenty-two, twenty-three, which will be replaced by the Grey Root Strategy outlined in the Economic Development, Tourism, and Culture Master Plan. So twenty twenty-three was a standout year for Grey Roots. Can we go to the next slide? We rebounded back to our pre-pandemic numbers with over twenty-four thousand through the door, an increase of forty-four percent over twenty twenty-two. We marked major milestones like the opening of the Arnet General Store in Morriston Heritage Village and the launch of the abundant section of the ongoing redesign of the exhibit in the Gray County Gallery. Our team, along with volunteers, delivered one hundred and thirty-seven programs, events, and exhibits, including the cherished Morrison by Candlelight evenings and operating the Heritage Village at full capacity for sixty-four days. And by that, I mean every building was opened and manned with an interpreter. Or personed with an interpreter, I should say. For our events, Grey Roots produced a full suite in twenty twenty-three. Larger seasonal events such as Spring into Morriston Harvest Fest and Morrison by Candlelight were very well attended, attracting over three thousand people to the museum. We can hop to the next slide. There we go. Where was I? This shot you see is from Spring into Morriston last year and a Birds of Prey demonstration. That was really a big hit with families. We also welcomed back community collaborative events such as the Emancipation Festival's Speakers' Corner and Gospel Sunday, a documentary presented by Director Sandy Greer about Everett Soup, a Blackfoot cartoonist, journalist, and public speaker. And we were also really happy to host the Kegadance Press Anniversary Event. They celebrated their thirtieth year and are one of the longest-running Indigenous publishers in Canada. And moving along to programs. Based on some of the feedback we got from our public consultations through our strategic plan, staff invited several local businesses to conduct workshops at Grey Roots, collaborating with Adrian's Canning and Jamming's out of Hanover, Red Hen Artisanal out of Priceville, and Woolies in the country in Georgian Bluffs. We hosted nine workshops. And due to their popularity, we expanded with additional dates, including Saturday and evening slots. In our education program, staff tailored our offerings to align with the Ontario curriculum expectations in order to make the best of our traveling exhibits and museum spaces. They created Made to Move, which engaged students with Leonardo da Vinci traveling exhibit, Settler Savvy, which delved into simple machines in the Heritage Village, and Cooking by the Calendar, which explored seasonal food traditions. They also developed Code Quest, connecting hands-on coding activities to the Game Changers exhibit. Grey Roots welcomed thirty-three school bookings in twenty twenty-three and twelve hundred and forty-three students. And with the goal of making better use of our theater, Grey Roots presented the Our Roots Are Showing concert series, four shows that brought in two hundred and sixty people in our shoulder season and showcased a diverse range of musical performances. We also presented the long-running Spring and Fall Lecture Series, which was as popular as ever, and covered topics from the Canadians and the Italian campaign in the Second World War to the true kind history of the Wicklow family of Chatsworth, which was a great one. To get everything ready for the grand opening of the Arnet General Store, the curatorial staff shifted into high gear to dress the interiors to depict an authentic nineteen twenties general store. They researched and sourced labels that could be applied to jars, cans, boxes, and bottles to create products that were sold in rural Ontario. The staff recruited dedicated volunteers to create these products in crafting bees, and the summer students worked hard pulling items from storage and packing them and transporting them out to the store. Right now, we have over seven hundred artifacts and countless replicas that dress the shelves, display cases, and counters of the exhibit. And just an aside, they've made even more this year, and so the store is looking really amazing for this summer. Grey Roots was fortunate in twenty twenty-three to host two quality traveling exhibits. We were able to extend the stay of Leonardo da Vinci Machines in Motion to the end of April, allowing visitors more time to explore the interactive recreations of some of his most ingenious inventions. In May, we welcomed Game Changers, an exhibit developed and produced by the Canadian Science and Technology Museum and toured by Science North. The exhibit traced the evolution of video games spanning classics like Pong and Pac-Man to the immersive games of today. It was an excellent draw for the museum, and anecdotally, we heard from a few visitors that they came for Game Changers, but then they saw Morrison Heritage Village, and that was really like the highlight of their trip. We were excited to open the abundant section of the Gray County Gallery through our redesign process. I'll touch a little bit more on that later in the report, so I'll just jump ahead to Sacred Splendor. Viewers were presented with a beautifully detailed, strikingly lit stained glass windows. They were originally installed in the Desborough United Church in nineteen forty-nine and then subsequently transferred to Grey Roots artifact collection. Now, following substantial restoration work that was made possible with the financial support from the Katy North Derby United Church, these beautiful pieces of local history are once again on public display. The curatorial team also worked to produce eight smaller exhibits, such as the Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary of the Rail Connection to Toronto, Cruising the County: The History of Cars in Gray, and What's in Your Bag: A History of the Purse, which was a fun one. In nineteen twenty-three, Gray County Archives Reading Room saw a surge in research visits surpassing twenty twenty-two levels in eleven out of twelve months. Municipal archival transfers were a top priority. Public donations resulted in forty-seven new acquisitions, adding roughly twenty-one linear feet of material to the collection. Over nine hundred images from Jay James photographic works spanning from nineteen oh five to nineteen fifty-five are now accessible on the Archives database. These images primarily showcase Owen Sound and feature businesses, street scenes, harbor views, and portraits. The museums welcomed three hundred and forty-six research sessions, three hundred and seventy-four inquiries, and forty-five requests from municipalities. Research sessions at the Grey County Archives involve the utilization of collected materials by researchers. Inquiries encompass individuals who have either donated items, perused the collection, asked questions, or participated in a tour, and additionally, municipal requests often originate from lower-tier municipalities who seek access to past bylaws and resolutions, minutes, and proceedings, and other pertinent records of council. These stats don't include the hundreds of phone calls and emails that the Archives receives with all manner of inquiry, not to mention our own requests that we put on them when we're creating new exhibits, programs, and interpretive materials for the village. So moving along to collaboration activities. Grey Roots continues to benefit from the patient guidance and support of the Indigenous Advisory Circle. On June second in twenty twenty-three, we launched the Saking Anishinaabe King Presents Our Stories exhibit. And the picture you see here is Niall Johnson, the artist of the display, speaking about his intentions for the art. Members of the IAC helped facilitate training sessions and experiences for the Grey Root Summer Students through Anishinaabe cultural experiences at Cape Croker. We're heading there with our new students next week. Members participated in Grey Root Special Events, and the Circle met for a final time in October of twenty twenty-three. We've also met this year, so not final forever. In the meeting, we continued to focus on ways to respectfully represent Indigenous history and culture in Grey Roots initiatives, such as the Gray County Gallery redesigned content and refreshing the medicine garden at the entrance of the museum. In twenty twenty-three, the Gray County Cultural Community Cultural Initiatives Fund supported projects that raised awareness of Gray County's diverse cultural history, such as enhancing the signage at the Old Durham Road Black Pioneer Cemetery and supporting the Nebra Creek Community Monument Project. Support was provided to a multidisciplinary display showcasing the local Greek community and will unveil in twenty twenty-four. Grey Roots supported improvements to the displays at the Anishinaabe Interpretive Center at Cape Croker and the Gichi Name Wicadon Reconciliation Garden, hosting community gatherings for National Indigenous People's Day, Red Dress Day, and Indigenous Veterans Day. Members of Saking First Nation are working to advance the Minjimnudamen, We Remember Memorial Project honoring residential school survivors. Grey Roots was able to provide resources for community engagement activities and is proud to support such an important project. In September of twenty twenty-three, staff brought forward a report to council outlining a final agreement with Blue Water District School Board for council consideration and endorsement. With council approval, the agreement was signed in October, and the pilot project is going well, I'm happy to report. On May second, the Blue Water District School Board organized an open house event at Grey Roots to recognize the program and the community collaboration that brought about the move to the village. We'll be meeting with board reps in the coming weeks to talk about the things we've learned from the pilot and to discuss whether we want to recreate that agreement. And that little lamb's name is Marty. He's an unofficial mascot at Grey Roots. Grey Roots was one of five Pioneer Partner Museums that collaborated on a project led by Pickering Museum Village. Pickering received a grant from Digital Museums of Canada to develop a free virtual exhibit and educational resource aimed at students grade seven to twelve, focusing on the evolution of blacksmithing in Ontario. The five partner sites across Ontario included Fanshawe Pioneer Village, Westfield Heritage Village, Lang Pioneer Village, Fleming College, and Grey Roots. Each were responsible for representing a specific area of blacksmithing from the nineteen sixties to the present day. We focused on the blacksmith's transition from horse-led vehicles to the early automobiles. Our challenge was to forge a snow chain, which was fitting, I thought, for Gray County. As you know, they would have been very important for getting around in the nineteen twenties in the winter. As you know, I've talked about it in council a few times, the new design for the exhibits in the Gray County Gallery enhanced the accessibility and allow us to show quite a few more artifacts. I just wanted to draw attention to this chart in the in the report and just highlight that where there was once ninety-four artifacts, there's now a hundred and ninety-two artifacts. We're increasing the number of graphics and images by double, basically. So really getting a lot more of the collection on display. We're also improving the accessibility standards and making everything more legible. So looking at our performance measures, so our visitors through the door, paid visitors, and our revenues. This chart outlines the numbers of visitors through the door in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Through the doors numbers include anyone that comes through the museum, so those that are coming for tourism information, room rentals, washroom facilities, and paid visitation includes those who pay admission or a fee for programming or special events. A few highlights I'd like to point out are that we surpassed twenty nineteen in our admissions revenue, which is a huge win as twenty nineteen was really a banner year for the museum. We are up in membership, retail sales, and kids camp. We were able to meet our twenty twenty-three revenue targets for special events, but they are not at the same level of twenty nineteen. And I would say we have adjusted post-COVID the number of events that we do and are adding more smaller-scale events to make better use of the theater. A quick slide just to mention the funding support we received from outside sources. The Federal Canada Cultural Spaces Fund supports the redesign in the Gray County Gallery. We received the Community Museum Operating Grant from the province. We also received student grants from the Yon Canada Works Program and Canada Summer Jobs. And we also were very grateful to receive corporate sponsorships for the Arnet General Store, Zuz's Place Children's Gallery, and Morrison by Candlelight. And we are always hugely grateful for the donations that come to us from private citizens. I should mention, yes, so yeah, the Kids Camp lunch donation also sponsored the procurement of toys and activities for our carts in the Gray County Gallery. So what to expect moving forward into twenty twenty-four? Twenty twenty-four is our twentieth anniversary of being at the location we're at right now. We are planning a suite of events and experiences to celebrate this exciting milestone, including a kickoff event in June and that on June twenty-eighth that coincides with the end of the school year. And then a gala evening event this fall to bring a little sparkle, swank to the celebrations. We are producing many of our beloved seasonal events and performances, but also adding the Multiculturalism Festival in partnership with Grey Roots Settlement and Language Services and bringing back the launch event for the nineteenth issue of the Northern Terminus, the African-Canadian Journal of History. And on June, or sorry, August twenty-fifth, we're bringing back our car show. Very excited about it. For programs and exhibits, we'll be producing more skills workshops for adults. We just finished a whole series on pasta. Kids Camp is all but sold out apart from two spaces, and the end of the year, school programs are starting to book up. We've got a number of new exhibits to share, including Erskine Brown Carving Memories and the Meaford One-Fiftieth Exhibit, which were up this winter and will be back this fall. Erskine Brown Carving Memories and the Meaford One-Fiftieth Exhibit, which were up this winter and will be back this fall. Carrying Culture is newcomer keepsakes from home is an exhibit that shares stories and hopes of newcomers to Gray and Bruce Counties. The items featured in the exhibit are cherished keepsakes on loan from newcomers to Gray Bruce. These prized keepsakes made the journey to Canada before finding a home in Gray Bruce, and these items could not be left behind. Each tells a story that's unique and powerful about their immigration experience. The exhibit is in collaboration with Gray Bruce Language and Settlement Services as well. And then our new traveling exhibit is called Inspiring Nature Inspired Techno Biomimicry and Transport. We did try to shorten the name, but they wouldn't have it. Visitors of all ages can explore the fascinating intersection between nature and technology through hands-on, interactive displays. This engaging exhibit doesn't just demonstrate the natural inspiration behind many technologies, but goes further to inspire curiosity, wonder, and the love of science and nature. The bilingual exhibition is a production of the Sherbrooke Science and Nature Museum. And then the last slide is just to say thank you for your patience as I delivered all of this information. We are looking forward to exploring and implementing the priority actions outlined in the new Economic Development Tourism and Culture Master Plan. We have just returned from the Canadian Museum Association's Annual Conference, and I can report that Gray Roots is aligned with current museum trends, emphasizing diverse perspectives, experiential learning, collaboration, and sustainability. Our thirteen summer students are in the process of being on-boarded as I speak and will be ready to help in all parts of our operations for the high season. As we head into our twentieth year, we are grateful for the dedication of Gray Roots' fabulous volunteers, respectful of all of the work from staff and council that has gone into making such a world-class facility, and excited to share our twenty twenty-four event exhibits and programs and services with Gray County visitors and residents. Thank you, and I'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Jill. It's always exciting to hear what's going on at Gray Roots, see how it's grown and recovered from the pandemic. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Matrasovs, please.
Thank you. Through you, the Warden, a comment and a question. It was a pleasure to participate in the May second open house for the High Skills Program, the agricultural program. And what I was impressed with is that it was also an opportunity for the hospitality and tourism high school students to display their talents by providing the refreshments. And in addition to that, we saw the shed that was built by the construction high skills students. So, you know, people have the automatic connection to the agricultural, but it was actually all-encompassing. And given that we've received this as a pilot project and whether or not it continues, and I know that Blue Water District School Board were the ones that came to us to ask us. I wondered, my question through to staff would be, are there other conversations that are going on about other ways in which we can support these high school, these high-skill programs? Because there are, I think, eight of them in total of all different topics, how we can do some more collaboration? Thank you.
Hi, I certainly welcome that kind of collaboration, and I know in my remarks on the day I was trying to say, you know, museums are tearing down their walls and opening their doors and inviting the community in and really need to be led by what the community needs from the museum and how we can serve that. So the ag program is definitely an amazing example of what we can do. It's really been fantastic so far. So, yeah, I think Gray Roots could have all kinds of opportunities, especially for the catering students I was thinking of, construction possibly as well. So, yeah.
CEO Windrow.
Thanks through you, Mr. Warden. Great question, and I wish Savannah was here with us today because...
Sorry, I'm virtual.
There you are. All right, Savannah, I'll let you speak to your own work then. Super.
Good morning, council. Thank you, Kim. So good to see you. I can definitely speak to the specialist high school major and the work that we've done with the school boards, especially through Syndem. So we have been fortunate enough to host several of their skills competitions and pilots. We work closely with Georgian College, and that will continue. So it was really nice to see the expansion of Gray Roots and start to encompass our full department. But working with the specialist high school majors and all the OYA program has always been a priority for us, and that will continue through the two facilities that we have.
Thank you, Savannah. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Jill. I will call the question. All those in favor, that is carried. So again, thank you, Jill, and thank you, Savannah, for jumping in there. That was that was surprising, but good. It's five to eleven. Does council need a break? Yes, they do, apparently. So let's recess for, well, we'll try to be back by eleven o'clock. One minute warning. Okay, I think we have, yeah, we have four and back. So we'll bring the meeting back to order. The next report is regarding correspondence from the Multimunicipal Energy Working Group. Wait, wrong. Wrong one. Seven B is where we're at. Bill one eighty-five update. Scott Taylor is relieved that he doesn't have to talk to whatever I just talked about. But it's not lunchtime yet, so who scheduled Scott? Anyway. Welcome, Scott. We look forward to your report. Do I have a mover and seconder, please? Councilor Kettner and Councilor Matrasovs, thank you. Welcome, Scott.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Warden, and good morning, Warden and members of County Council and those that might be tuning in. I've taken a very different approach to Jill. Jill had a wonderful presentation with lots of pictures and everything else. This is all words, just a warning. And, yeah, I can't compete with Gray Roots in that regard. They're really fantastic. But I would like to say thank you to a number of other county staff in various departments that all contributed towards this report. This was a big effort on a relatively short timeframe. The province only announced these new legislative changes and the new draft provincial funding statement on twenty twenty-four. So I'd like to thank our finance team, our legal services team, community services staff, economic development, tourism, culture, the CEO and deputy CEO, and our own planning team. They all contributed to this report, and I'm grateful for their efforts in that regard. With respect to what's before you today, the report is lengthy. I will try to keep this brief and touch on just some of the highlights. The legislation, the Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act, and the draft provincial planning statement were introduced on April tenth. The comments are due back to the province by May tenth, so tomorrow, and May twelfth, so we are on a tight timeframe here. Bill one eighty-five itself is proposing to amend a number of pieces of legislation, including the Planning Act, Development Charges Act, and the Municipal Act. And the draft provincial planning statement is an update from the draft that was shared in twenty twenty-three that generated a lot of discussion at the County Council table, at our Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee table, and our Agricultural Advisory Committee table. As you'll see in the resolution today, we are recommending that we share this report with both of those advisory committees. Based on the timing, there wasn't the ability to bring a report to those committees ahead of coming to committee the whole here today. I will say the report was also informed by discussions with your own municipal staff, who are wonderful, and I know some of them have already prepared reports for your own municipal tables. And we also had a discussion with the Planning Subject Matter Experts Group from the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, and certainly there was a lot to be learned there. I will say in general, and, you know, I will say in general, and, and, you know, you, you, you can already gather this, um, planning thrives on routine. We thrive on policy. As, as much as you might view us as risk takers, um. May- maybe not, uh, or I shouldn't speak for all planners, some maybe not. Uh, and, and so dealing with this constant change in both provincial legislation and provincial policy. Uh, does make it difficult to continually adapt processes. And if the goal is further efficiency in our planning processes. Um, it would be nice to have a few years of, of just stable ground to work within and, and to start to, uh, build and refine those efficiencies. And, and this isn't meant to be in any way, uh, a slight against the province. They're working hard to, to address a number of issues and, and certainly. A staff, we want to be there working alongside them and, and, and looking at our processes. Um, but I will just say that, that the constant change is a bit of a difficulty in that regard. Uh, specifically with respect to the changes to Development Charges Act, lots of good stuff in here and, and, and some of what's, uh, what's, uh, uh, good in the Changes to Development Charges Act is, is maybe a rethink or refinement or a repeal of, of some previous legislative changes. Uh, they're repealing the mandatory fa- five-year phase-in for development charges. So this means after a new, doing a new background study and bylaw, you could come in at a hundred percent versus having to, to phase that in as, at a percentage basis. Uh, they're reinstating the cost of, of, of studies back as ineligible capital costs that we can collect D Cs for. So for example, when we do a development charges background study at the county, uh, that's been built into, to, uh, previous development charges such that the development charges pay for that background study. Uh, so this would, this would put that back in. Uh, there's new provisions around extending, uh, development charges, uh, where you're going from the five to now the ten-year permissions. Without a full background study, uh, and they've also clarified that the new exemptions for affordable housing will start on June first, twenty twenty four. Um, certainly, we, we support the intent of that. Uh, there are still some concerns with, with that implementation date based on, uh, the number of administrative duties and agreements that would need to be in place at your own municipal tables, uh, to, to ensure those, those, uh, exemptions occur on affordable units. It also means that for the first time, we'll see the new provincial bulletin on the, eh, the affordable rates across the province to, to give us an understanding of, of where we're going in that regard. Uh, the province had previously made comments about keeping municipal, uh, D C revenues whole in this regard. Uh, so we, we look forward to further discussions and details, uh, from the province on that one. And finally, with respect to maybe a suggestion to the province on, on what they could further consider with respect to the D C Act, uh, we, we would certainly. Recommend to staff that they consider adding government or social housing and lack land acquisition back in as an eligible D C cost. As you may remember, a few years ago, when, when the province removed that, um, we were, we were, uh, forced to stop, uh, being able to collect development charges. Uh, for, for our own county-owned housing, and that was about twelve percent of, of the county's D Cs at that time. With respect to the municipal act, there's new provisions that are being taken out of the planning act and put into the municipal act with respect to servicing allocation bylaws. Obviously, the county doesn't own and operate our, our municipal water and wastewater treatment servicing. Uh, so we had a good discussion with your municipal staff on this. Uh, generally, there was no concerns. They were supportive. Uh, the only comment we heard was that we're a municipality. Already has an existing bylaw in place. Hopefully that doesn't have any, any negative effects on that, uh, existing bylaw. Uh, there's further provisions being considered through the municipal act that would, for the first time, authorize, uh, bonusing for municipalities. For specified manufacturing, industrial, and commercial businesses. Uh, staff in, in a number of departments, uh, do have concerns with this one. Uh, we have concerns that it, it could, um. We could run into a situation like you've seen in parts of the United States whereby municipalities are, are forced to compete against one another to attract new development. And, and, uh, you know, put their best offer forward in, in some cases, maybe to the, the detriment of long-term municipal finances. Um, if the province is going to pursue some, some bonusing in this regard, we, we definitely want to see it, uh, be very clear and transparent in the guidelines. Uh, such that we know if, if public dollars are going into a, a private project, uh, there's that clear transparency. Our recommendation would be that, that maybe they not go, uh, full speed ahead on, on these manufacturing, industrial, and commercial businesses. Maybe we, we start with, uh, allowing for some level of bonusing to not-for-profits. Uh, maybe that could help with, with affordable on-the-table housing. Or maybe they look at further enhancing some of the community improvement, uh, plan po- powers under the planning act in that regard. Uh, with respect to the planning act changes, um, this is, this is sort of a retread of some old ground here. In that they're looking to remove, uh, appeal rights for, or third-party appeal rights for official plans, official plan amendments. Zoning bylaws and zoning bylaw amendments, and those would be limited to a specified person. And in order to fully understand this change, you need to know the definition of specified person, which doesn't include the public. Uh, so there's certain, uh, utilities and, and government agencies and municipalities that could be a specified person. Uh, but a member of the public is, is not a specified person. Um, staff have mixed feelings on this one. Uh, on the one hand, from a, a pure, uh, time management and municipal finance perspective. It might result in, in less appeals and, and less expenses, which, which, uh, may be a positive thing. Uh, we do feel like it could amp up the pressure on both municipal councils and, and staff in this regard. If the public feel that they don't have a, a appeal right to following a council decision, uh, and so there could be some challenges in that regard. Um, we certainly see merit perhaps in, in limiting appeals on, on some files, so perhaps, uh, certainly affordable or attainable housing. Or maybe those zoning amendments that are associated with a subdivision, because there's already restrictions in place on, on appealing the subdivision. Um, but to go full speed ahead on, on all four of these items, uh, might be a, a challenge in the future. And so this is paired with the next item, which is they're adding in new appeal rights for when a municipality, uh, refuses a settlement area, uh, boundary expansion. Uh, so let's just say, uh, developer A appealed to a municipality to, to grow the boundaries by, by eighty hectares. Uh, under the current planning regime, if, if the municipality refused that, there would be no appeal rights to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Um, this one is concerning to staff, and, and certainly we've already heard from some members of, of the, um, farm community. Uh, that this is concerning to farmers as well, because, because they think it could have a, a deleterious impact on, on, uh, on, um, preserving our farmland in that regard. Um, it's, it's, it's interesting that if, if you take the first two bullets on this slide, so let's just pick a, a random municipality. Let's say municipality of Meaford was undertaking a new official plan. And as part of that official plan, uh, exercise, they did, they did extensive consultation. They heard from the public. They heard from developers and everyone else. And as part of that, they decided to keep the primary settlement area boundary of Meaford firm. He said, no, there's no need for an expansion at this time. And if that official plan was approved, then there would be no appeal rights. Um, two years later, a developer comes in and says, you know, give me eighty hectares, uh, on, on the edge of Meaford to, to bring into the settlement area. Again, if, if Meaford said, no, we just did our official plan, we, we've underd- we've undergone our, our, uh, infrastructure planning. We don't see the need at this time. Um, suddenly the developer could appeal that. Um, so, so when you, when you partner these two, um, it, it does appear to be a bit of a conflict. And, and we do believe it would be challenging to both municipalities for their long-term growth and infrastructure planning, uh, but also to, uh, potential farmland impacts and, and other impacts in that regard. With respect to some of the other changes, uh, they've made the pre-submission consultation process, or they're proposing to make the pre-submission consultation process, uh, voluntary now versus, versus. Municipalities being able to pass bylaws as both the county and our number of our municipalities already do. Um, staff believe maybe there's some room for defining or scoping the pre-submission consultation process, but to make it a hundred percent voluntary, uh, would be challenged. Challenging. This is really the time to have those frank discussions with landowners or developers. About, uh, about their development, maybe look at some refinements to the proposal and, and help them understand the process ahead. Uh, and, and, uh, we do believe that if, if developers don't choose to, to engage in this type of consultation, uh, then there could be, um. More applications coming forward, which, which, for lack of a better term, are, are sort of half-cooked and, and, uh, maybe could have stood for, for just a little bit more refining in that regard. Uh, and then you pair that with the, the last bullet on the slide where, where, uh, a developer can now refer a pre-submission consultation application, even though it's voluntary, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Uh, under the current planning regime, if you submit an application to a municipality, so if you submit a, an official plan amendment to the county. Uh, the county has thirty days to deem it complete or incomplete, and if the developer disagrees with, with what the county's come up with in that regard. They can refer to the, the land tribunal at that stage. Under this new planning regime, um, they could refer it even before submitting the application. Uh, again, staff see challenges on this, and, and, and so maybe some of those, uh, gains from, from the first bullet in terms of less time at the tribunal. Uh, will be made up with more time at the tribunal with, with this other bullet. It's also not clear if, if pre-submission consultation is, is voluntary. When does that, that clock even start ticking that somebody could, could refer it? So. You know, to be a little bit facetious, was if a developer phoned the planning department and said, what do you need for this application? And, and we said X, Y, and Z. Could they refer it simply after that phone call? Uh, it's not clear in that regard. So lots more to follow there. With respect to some of the other changes, I think the first one on this slide, the removal of the, uh, required fee refunds for zoning amendments and site plans. Is generally thought to be a positive one amongst municipalities. This was a challenge. And, and this was perhaps the reason why some municipalities had front-ended their pre-submission consultation process so heavily. Uh, updating requirements for, for the lack of, uh, local newspapers. So, so if you're in a community that doesn't have a local newspaper. Um, you can, you can now, um, post ads on your website and, and other sources. And, and this is generally viewed to be a, a, a positive one, and it applies to both Planning Act and the Development Charges Act. Uh, the province is also looking at, uh, new regulations for, uh, additional residential units. Uh, county staff are generally supportive of this one, uh, but we just note that a, a one-size-fits-all, um, probably doesn't work across the province. Uh, so the level of, of snowfall in, in Windsor or Sarnia is quite different than the level of snowfall in, in, uh, Blue Mountains, for example. And, and so when we're looking at the, the, uh, lot sizes and unit sizes, uh, for these, uh, additional residential units. Um, sometimes there are some practical considerations like setbacks and, and, uh, and lot coverage, which, which relate to, uh, snow storage that would be useful to have some municipal autonomy on. Uh, there's also provisions which allow municipalities and, and counties the ability to, to, uh, set lap states or revoke site plans or subdivisions. Uh, these powers have generally already existed for subdivisions, but it is new on a site plan. Uh, and they've also proposed a, a, um. Mandatory lap states being applied to, to, uh, uh, any subdivision draft approved prior to a, a certain date in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, the province is also looking at merging the Community Infrastructure Housing Accelerator, uh, process, which was commonly referred to as the CHIA process. Uh, with, with a new amended Minister's zoning order, M Z O framework. Uh, again, staff are generally supportive of this, uh, provided there's, there's due transition policies for those, uh, CHIA orders that were already in place. Notably in Gray County, we have a, an important one in Blue Mountains that was already in place. So we just want to make sure that, that, uh, continues forward in that regard. Moving on to the provincial policy statement, provincial planning statement, sorry. Uh, this, as council may remember, is an amalgamation of the current provincial growth plan and the provincial policy statement into one policy document. Uh, some of the biggest concerns we heard about the draft, uh, twenty twenty ver- twenty twenty-three version were with respect to some of the new development permissions in both our primary cultural lands and our rural lands. Uh, they have stepped back on a number of those matters, so, so they're removing the permissions for three severances off of every farm, which was a major concern to, to this, uh, council, as well as our egg advisory committee. Uh, they've removed the permissions for multi-law residential development in rural. Uh, and, and they've clarified some provisions with respect to additional residential units and, uh, resource-based recreational units. Uh, they're also updating a number of definitions, including the on-ti- the on-farm diversified use definition. Uh, to include land extensive energy facilities. I don't want to steal any of Liz Buckton's thunder, because that's coming up in the next report. Um, but this would be these battery and it's battery energy storage systems. Uh, and, and, uh, they've helped define how those might, uh, fit into our agricultural and rural areas. Uh, we are recommending both through this report and through Liz's report that the province, uh, consider, uh, offering more policy guidance on, on, uh, both battery energy storage systems, eh, as well as renewable energy systems in general. Uh, with the repeal of the Green Energy Act, there is a bit of a policy void. So anything the po- the province can do to, to help, uh, Ontario's four hundred and forty-plus municipalities, rather than each of us having to figure it out on our own, would be greatly appreciated. Um, there's a, a new policy section in the provincial planning statement around strategic growth areas, which are targeted areas within your settlement areas where you might want to, uh, sort of prioritize growth and investment of infrastructure. Staff are generally supportive there. Uh, we do believe it, it probably impacts faster-growing or, or high-growth municipalities a little more than some of the communities in Gray, but I think it is a pos- a positive policy direction. Um, there is also a, a, um, change in the comprehensive review policies for those that, that might, might, not, might not be into the planning minutia. A comprehensive review was a, a study that's required by the, uh, provincial policy statement currently. Anytime you want to expand a settlement area, uh, designate a new settlement area, or, or redesignate employment lands to a non-employment purpose. Um, again, staff have concerns here that, that this might make those, um, um, unwarranted, um, supplementary expansions easier to come by, and particularly when you pair that with the, uh, the, um, new appeal rates we talked about under the planning act. We think there could be some, some negative effects on, on, uh, municipal planning and infrastructure in this regard. Uh, similar to, to the, the comments on the appeal rights, the, the, uh, farmers have also come out, uh, with some concerns about this one. They have added one new test for the establishment of a, a, a new settlement area, um, which relates to, uh, infrastructure and public service facilities being available. Uh, but we do still believe that, uh, that the current policy regime, maybe with a little bit of flexibility added, um, would be better than, than getting rid of the requirement altogether. And then there's, in our opinion, some further weakening of the employment area policies and, and the, the necessary separation between sort of your more noxious industrial-type uses and, and, uh, sensitive uses like residential or institutional uses in that regard. Um, with respect to affordable housing, there's some positive, uh, changes there. They have reinstated a definition for affordable housing. Which is linked back to income as well as housing prices in the area. Uh, notably, they're not even linking it to the regional market area anymore. They're linking it to the municipality. Um, so staff view this as a positive change, and, and we certainly had concerns with the earlier draft, twenty twenty-three P P S version in this regard. Uh, with respect to the planning horizon, there were some concerns in the previous draft whereby they said municipalities shall plan for at least twenty-five years, but, but didn't put an upper end of that on. Uh, and, and that created some, some difficulties in, in, uh, again, infrastructure planning and dealing with certain development applications. So what they've done now is, is they've put in a range of planning for twenty to thirty years. And then you have specific exceptions for infrastructure, public service facilities, employment areas, and strategic growth areas. So we think this is a great middle ground and, and, and kudos to the province for these changes. Uh, finally, with respect to, to sort of how we plan and, and how we forecast those future, um, population and employment projections. Uh, the province is now requiring that everybody use the Ministry of Finance projections. And, and, and so, you know, there, there are some positives there. We're all, we're all playing from, from, uh, a level playing field. Um, there are some mixed feelings as well, because, uh, there are some concerns as to whether or not some of those local nuances will be communicated. Uh, i- in, in a province-wide, uh, population and, um, and employment projection. If there is an over or under forecast that could impact how we, um, do our development charges background studies. And we could be overestimating the amount of income through development charges that would kind of come in, or underestimating the amount of growth. And I'll further say that, that the current Ministry of Finance projections are only broken out by region and county. Um, so there would still be a role for the county here to take the, the broad number that's, uh, shared by the province and then allocate that out to each of our nine-member municipalities. So, you know, I think there are some positives with this one in terms of a common, uh, projection framework and, and all working from the same, but, uh, having some ability for local input and nuance would certainly be appreciated in that regard. We are coming to the end soon, I promise. Um, with respect to, um, some of the servicing changes, there's some policies that, that kind of link back to those use-it-or-lose-it policies that we discussed in the legislative changes. About allocating and reallocating servicing to meet housing needs. Uh, so you, if you have a, a development that's, that's stalled and, and they're taking up, uh, potential servicing capacity, there might be the opportunity to look at allocating that servicing capacity elsewhere. Uh, there are some new policies with respect to partial servicing. And so when we say partial servicing. That refers to our communities that are serviced by one municipal service. So let's say you had municipal water. And then are serviced by individual private services. So municipal water paired with, with private septic systems. And, and the province has always had restrictions on partial servicing, um, but there were limited carve-outs for, for where growth could occur, could occur there. They've made a further distinction in these new policies to, to allow for greater development in those communities that have municipal services and private water. So in Gray County, that would, that would really only impact Flesherton. Um, and, and sort of, if you read sort of the converse of those policies, those communities that have municipal water but private septics. Um, might be further restricted from growth, and, and there's about eight or nine communities in, in Gray, uh, that are operating there. Um, the village of Chatsworth, Walters Falls, Bonney Beach, uh, um, the, the inland lakes and shoreline out to Leith. Uh, various communities like that, that in theory could, could have, uh, growth restricted depending on how these policies are applied. So we are seeking some, some further clarification there. And then in general, we are seeking, uh, further leadership and direction from the province with respect to climate change. There's broad-level policy, broad-level provisions in the planning act that tell us we need to be considering and planning for climate change. And, and so we really think the provincial planning statement is, is a great place for, for the province to put their best foot forward in that regard and provide some of that leadership. And so with that, we're on to the recommendation. We're recommending that, uh, that committee of the whole receive the report, that these constitute our county comments with respect to the various environmental registry postings that are, that are due, like I said, tomorrow and on the twelfth. Um, and that this report be shared with the Planning and Economic, Economic Development Advisory Committee, the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And our member municipalities within Gray. And just based on the timelines, we are having that, uh, final provision in there to, to authorize staff to move forward before the minutes go to council. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if there's any questions. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if there's any questions.
Wow, that's quite a report. A lot of stuff there. I can't imagine any questions, but anyway, councillor Boddy, go ahead, sir.
I think you mentioned uh seeking guidance and leadership and funding? Did you say funding as well from the province to help us with some of these changes?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I I I didn't say funding, but if that's something that that uh council would like to express to the province, we can certainly. Uh that either in in uh a covering letter or in some follow up correspondence, there's there's a number of things that could. Impact municipal pocketbooks, so to speak, so it's probably a fair change.
Well, let's throw that out to council, should we? I mean. That's one of our biggest issues is funding from the province on so many of these things. There's. Changes that come from the province that ask us to do things that seems to load onto staff and uh. Load requirements, uh maybe we should be asking for funding every time they make these changes and we reply back them uh on their changes that. We'd like to see a check come with it.
I don't disagree. Uh and quite honestly, if if the province hasn't got that message yet. I'm not sure repeating it again is going to fix it, but it doesn't hurt to ask. You don't ask, you don't get. So, yeah, I I don't disagree with you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, and through you, I do have one question. I do recall uh. Mister Taylor, a year ago approximate, Ms. Myers was here and spoke. To the importance of the county protecting industrial and employment lands. Particularly serviced um already. You did touch upon that a little bit in your comments there, um. But you spoke to some of the weakening uh on the in the links between um some different uses. That might um. Impact what's already there in terms of zoning and appropriate lands. I just want to make sure that um what I heard there is is um. Ensuring that what was said last year um is responding to, you know, that we are wanting to protect those lands. We recognize it's a need and uh and you did speak to some of the the weakening there, but um I just want to make sure that. That language is completely um aligned with uh what we heard a year ago in terms of um. Yeah, how it relates. Thanks.
Uh through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your your comments, our councillor Greg. Yeah, so staff do have concerns. It's it's sort of a a two-fold concern with respect to the employment area. One is is linking back to that uh removal of the the firm requirement for a comprehensive review. Uh so both the county and member municipalities used to be able to uh to a certain extent stand in these comprehensive reviews. Uh to really hold someone's feet to the fire if they were looking to redesignate a piece of employment land. Um and in some cases, there were legitimate redesignations. Maybe you had a an old historic uh. Factory that was now surrounded by by residential. It wasn't in your business park anymore, hadn't been a factory for the past fifty years. Yeah, maybe that's not meant to be meant to be manufacturing. But in other cases where municipalities have invested heavily in those business parks and and employment areas. Uh we really see the need to protect some protect them. So both the comprehensive review uh provisions being removed. But then also um sort of the the erosion of some of the language with respect to separating sensitive uses. Um are both concerning to staff and and something through council we we definitely like to speak up on.
So you already have embodied all those that commentary and incorporated into your comments. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Councillor Mattressoff, please.
Thank you through you, the warden. Um with regards to the, and and I agree it's welcome. Uh the reassessment of what is affordable and and switching it from their language, I've read the. The statement myself, the language from regional to to municipal. What I can't find there is is that upper tier or lower tier municipality, and I guess, you know, and. So if we look at it here, we look at the average right across our municipality versus region. I wasn't sure if region was meant to be. Our upper tier or region was like southwest Ontario or something that goes beyond our boundaries. Do you have any further clarification on what they mean by municipality in the upper lower tier context? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your question, councillor Mattressoff. Um so the 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 way it's currently worded is is sort of there's a a two-fold test. And and this is very similar to the current definition in in the twenty twenty PPS. Um you either look at at the income based test, which is uh housing and accommodation costs. That don't exceed thirty percent of gross annual household income for low and moderate uh income households. Or you look at housing which is below ten percent of the average purchase price of the resale unit in the municipality. And and so the previous iteration of that second test used to speak to the regional market area. And and we'd been generally applying those as as our real estate boards. Um so we have the two real estate boards which which cover um um portions of Gray County. Uh versus our understanding of the current um. The way the current test is is set out is because it says in the municipality, we're assuming the the member municipality there. Um but until we see that that final provincial bulletin, which is to come out ahead of June first. Uh we're not a hundred percent sure, but I but I think it's it's going to be at the municipal level, but wait to see, I guess.
Thank you, Scott. Any other? Councillor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Millen, and through you, County Council. Thank you, Scott, for um very thorough commenting. I did want to ask a couple of questions uh with regard to the language about. The parking standards in your staff report. I find that, and I brought this up uh previously um at various locations. That the limiting the units, the requirement to one parking space per unit in the new provincial planning statement. Um does that take a rural lens in our communities where we don't have mass transit? That people are living or returning to the nest um at greater speed. Uh lately because of affordability and uh hope hoping that they have jobs. They are commuting to those jobs elsewhere, yeah, most times. So do we have flexibility to be to require more parking spaces? Or will that one parking space change in the PPS rule? That's one question, and the other one was to the funding question. I did appreciate that we're waiting on news on how the province is going to make us whole because. Some of our municipalities have experienced a loss of DCs in the past year because of the phase in. And that has affected our budgets and our ability for infrastructure. So I appreciate, I have several other questions, but those were the two um key ones. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Thanks for your questions and comments, councillor DeBreen. Our understanding and and there could be further regulations as per this this report uh issued on additional residential units. Um municipalities would still have the ability to to require. Uh you know, X number of parking spots for the primary unit. So if you pictured a home in your community where there's there's a single detached dwelling. Um then you could still say you need two parking spots or or whatever your municipal standards are uh for for that home. Our understanding of the current rules with respect to ARUs are those additional residential units. So whether it be sort of the basement apartment or the loft above the garage or the tiny home or whatever. Uh you could only require up to one parking space per additional unit. Um and and you know, that might be another one of those challenges or one of those situations where, you know, one spot. One size fits all approach doesn't work for the entire province. Um that said, I think in the province's defense, they were running up against uh too many municipalities. That had um extensive parking criteria such that on paper you could get an additional residential unit. But you never had the lot size to be able to meet the parking, so it was really on paper that you could only ever get that additional residential unit. So I think they've tried to to um. Maybe find a balance here in in giving municipalities still the ability to to. Uh set the parking for those primary units, but the additional residential units come through through uh the maximum of one. And and as you said, you know, those communities that are heavily served by transit, maybe you need no parking. Uh but those communities that that don't have any any transit, certainly no higher order transit, then then parking becomes a very different discussion. Uh with respect to your develop- the development charges uh comments, yeah, I know that's that's very much on the radar of a number of organizations. Including the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and others um with respect to understanding. Um how that uh those previous statements about keeping municipalities whole are going to be are going to be reflected in that regard.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Uh councillor McQueen and then councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Scott, for the report. Uh round three, four, and I turn around this, but going back to the appeals, I know about a year. Over a year ago, they changed the appeals on minor variances and severance to limit the the appeal process. Uh is that expanded now with the zoning part to limit that appeal as well for those that are able or unable to appeal? Or maybe you can expand on that a little bit.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thanks for your your question, councillor McQueen. Yeah, this is this has been an iterative process over the years. Uh a number of years ago, the the province uh removed the ability for third party appeals on uh plans of subdivision and plans of condominium. So that's been in place for a number of years. And then a few years ago, through Bill twenty three, initially, the initial draft of Bill twenty three proposed minor variances and consents and zoning amendments and. And official plan amendments. Uh they later walked back the zoning amendments and the official plan amendments and and just stuck with the the minor variances. And consents in that regard. And and so this is, you know, maybe round two of of trying to uh limit the the third party appeals on. The official plan and and zoning uh documents in this regard. So it would be very similar to those plan of subdivision or consent or minor variance appeals whereby. The developer could still appeal a non decision, a municipality could still appeal. Um but if you're a a neighbor, you might not have those same appeal rights.
And just to follow, I mean, you know, we had to change for being the chair of our committee of adjustment, we had to change our rigs. I read that every time there was a minor branch or severance because it changed, the the limitations changed on those appeals and. And so uh my greater concern was is when you're going into a public hearing. But we set regards to consents and minor variance, you want to be upfront with the public of what they're. What they can and cannot do, and and this moves that forward, as you're saying, uh right now it's draft form, so it's just that continuation. So thanks for that clarity.
Thanks, Paul. Uh councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Scott, thanks very much. I'm starting to understand it a little bit better, but uh. Can you just go into a little more detail? Uh you mentioned in here the additional residential units. Out on agricultural lands and how there may be a backdoor approach to more severances. With those ARUs, can you elaborate on that a little bit more? Because that would certainly be a concern if uh. You know, uh a person builds an additional unit and then instead of severing off the surplus farm. Now there's two severances there. Is that what I'm hearing could happen, or can you just enlighten me a little bit there, please?
That's through you, Mr. Warden. Thanks for your question, councillor Mackey. Yeah, that's one of the things we're seeking some additional clarity on because. They they've given now explicit permissions to allow for ARUs on the farm, which the county plan already does, and and we generally see that as a positive. So if you if you have a a dwelling on the farm, you could put a basement apartment in, or you could put a a a detached apartment. Uh the county policies right now speak to, you know, you don't you don't build that detached unit out in the middle of the field. You build it close to the existing house, close to the existing well and septic. We're not looking to take additional land out of production. Um but there are lots of legitimate cases, uh whether for farm labor or for a farm family member or just for someone else. Um that you would you would have those uh additional residential units uh in in the agricultural and rural areas. Um there are some that have interpreted these new ARU policies and the policies around severing a surplus farm dwelling severance. As you could sever the detached ARU separately. Um one of our our fellow county planning directors reached out to OMAF for staff on that. OMAF for staff clarified that is one hundred percent not the intent. Basically, you sever the surplus farmhouse, and if if you're severing it, the the ARUs come with it. It's not, you know, a backdoor way to get three lots. Um but based on the fact that a number of people have have jumped to the interpretation that you might be able to sever those those separately. Uh we are uh requesting that the province clarify this to say that, yes, you can have ARUs in in the uh in the egg areas. But no, you can't sever them separately from the house or the rest of the farm.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor, that is carried. Thank you, Scott. Okay, our next report is regarding battery energy storage systems and the impacts on our local area. Um Liz Buckton is here to, oh, there she is online. Welcome, Liz. She is here to. Provide this report. Someone care to move this, please? Councillor McKay and councillor Carlton. Welcome, Liz. The floor is yours.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Warden. Uh can everybody hear me okay? Okay, I uh little bit stuffy today, so I just, the volume, if I if we're having a volume issue, just let me know. Um but I'm just going to share my screen, and we've got a a brief presentation prepared. Um really, I think the intention is just to kind of tease out some of the key elements identified within our twenty-two page report. So uh just trying to kind of highlight the recommendations that are peppered throughout. So I'll just share my screen now. Whoa, maybe not. There we go. Wonderful. Okay, I think that we should all be looking at the same thing now. Uh so right now there should be a title page on uh as far as I understand, and I think that's what you're seeing as well. Wonderful. Naughty heads. Thank you so much. Uh okay, uh so you know, I think I think really we just wanted to give a little bit of background um. And address some of the background provided in the report. Uh and really, I think the discussion uh around battery energy storage systems happening right now. Uh has largely arisen uh in result of the IESO procurement processes that are ongoing or have been ongoing over the past year. Um and so the IESO uh came out with their uh long term one RFP uh last year to solicit battery energy storage systems. Um and actually, we've just received a notification through press release this morning. Uh from the province regarding kind of the success of of that procurement process. So. Um I think those contract awards are are coming quite quickly on the heels of that announcement. Um we do understand also in in discussions with IESO that there is another procurement um being prepared for release. Uh that will be their long term two RFP, uh and our understanding is that that will be issued in late twenty twenty four. Um and won't focus so much on best um facilities as standalone. Um but we'll be looking at uh new renewable energy generation sources, which may include a best as a component of that proposal. Um and I I guess really kind of the thrust of the report is that. Based on our research to date, there there are some policy and technical framework gaps relating to battery energy storages. Um and we've tried to detail those and tease those out throughout the report. Um uh but as far as the policy gaps go, you know, I think we we heard Scott talk a little bit about the ongoing changes. Uh to our planning framework. Um that is definitely a a component here as well. Uh that, you know, many municipalities and counties have not, since the repeal of the Green Energy Act, had the opportunity to reintroduce. Uh energy related policies into their planning documents just yet. So we wanted to highlight that the report, uh which I said is is quite wordy. Um was informed by not only a fair amount of desktop research, but a a fair number of conversations and consultations as well. Um so we have had an opportunity to to speak with various parties regarding um the battery energy storages. Uh as a as a concept and in an application. Um and I wanted to highlight that within the report, um we have appended a table. Uh and that really does um go into kind of the nitty gritty of of how we understand the Planning Act framework. Will apply to those battery energy storage facilities. Um and given the report that Scott just shared as well, um there are some draft provincial planning statement provisions and updated definitions that would also relate here. So we've tried to capture those within uh that appendix for consideration for the the go forward. Um and I think the other thing I'd note there is there are a number of in document links within that appendix, so. Um we have had the opportunity to identify uh various different resources from other jurisdictions that may help. Uh as we're looking at uh developing uh local framework policy and and zoning to apply to those facilities. Um and the the zoning practice for battery energy storage systems by the American Planning Association, that was just released last month as well. Um so kind of handy timing for for our consideration. So regarding the approval process for these facilities, um we understand that the permissions really will vary um from place to place. Uh and that will depend upon kind of the existing policy and zoning provisions that would be already in place in the local zoning bylaws or official plans. Um depending on how those existing provisions and zoning bylaws read. Uh you may see broad permissions for uh infrastructure utilities, uh and that could include best facilities on an as of rate basis. Um that could also prohibit. That could also prohibit or exclude those uses. So how those provisions in the zoning bylaws are currently wording will have an impact on, on how best can be addressed. Where best facilities are located in proximity to Hydro One infrastructure, they have developed their own fire protection risk and response assessment standard. It's mouthful. And that would apply to, to best within proximity to their infrastructure. There are some distance criteria that apply and also scale criteria that apply to whether or not facilities would be captured under that standard. We also understand that an environmental assessment process may be triggered related to the actual transmission lines or infrastructure ancillary to the best. And so again, that is kind of scale dependent on whether or not an EA would be triggered in that regard. I think the takeaway there is that, you know, not all best applications will follow an identical process. So there will be some nuance depending on the scale and citing of, of the proposed facilities as to what process will apply. A best specific technical framework does not presently exist in Canada. And so that was one of the things that we wanted to flag is that those facilities aren't necessarily embedded within our standards and codes. So in the building or fire code specifically. And so we have looked at some example standards and ordinances from the United States and beyond, which really I kind of, I guess they shape the accepted industry practice for those facilities. And so again, we've tried to highlight those within the appendix to the document to our report, really just kind of highlighting perhaps that those accepted standards could be useful for us in determining how we, how we regulate these uses. In terms of suggestions for consideration, staff do, do suggest that each local municipality review existing official plan and zoning provisions, as well as your site plan control bylaw wording, to determine in fact how your existing documents will apply to battery energy storage systems on a standalone basis. We've outlined in, in fairly significant detail in the report how updates to zoning might be pursued at municipal discretion for those facilities. But I, but I think we wanted to kind of tease out the idea here that battery energy storage is a technology that exists already in our communities at differing scales. And so as we're looking to develop zoning provisions and definitions, it will be important to kind of determine or, or distinguish between kind of small-scale ancillary types of best facilities versus those really larger utility scale installations and, and the requirements that apply to both scales could be different. We also wanted to note that, you know, again, depending on the scale and citing of those best facilities, the supporting study and safety documentation could come through Hydro One or an EA process, but maybe not. And in the case, maybe not, then it would fall to our Planning Act processes to trigger the provision of that information. So through those complete application requirements, for example, for zoning amendments. In the event that, let's just say your zoning allows for, for those uses as of right, and you don't have a zoning trigger, we have identified that site plan control may provide a bit of a trigger to request some documentation around those types of uses. Or given that proponents are looking to satisfy their IESO contracts, you know, I think reasonable requests for information could and should be honored. Or perhaps using some of the authorities that our building and fire officials have under their relative or related legislation, there may be an opportunity to obtain some of that information for our purposes there as well. Staff have included some brief commentary related to municipal support resolutions within the report. And we just wanted to highlight that there are elements of the Planning Act that do not empower an applicant to appeal a refusal of a renewable energy application. And so a proponent could, you know, invest significant dollars towards an application with very little recourse should that application be refused. And so it's our understanding for this next round of IESO intakes regarding renewables that they will likely make mandatory municipal support resolutions, meaning that the IESO would not consider a proposal that doesn't come with a municipal support resolution. And so I think we just wanted to highlight there that it will be very important to keep in mind that the applicant may not have recourse and just, you know, applying kind of that good faith lens to whether or not municipal support resolution is offered upfront will be important just from that good faith and transparency perspective. Also, through the report, we had highlighted that a county official plan update could be explored upon the direction of council. However, we did flag that some capacity constraints, resourcing constraints currently apply there. Within the financial and resource implications section of the report, we've, we've addressed some of the considerations of how we could perhaps proceed with that work if, if county council so desired. And, you know, we, we would highlight, I think, that there are other jurisdictions that are a little further ahead of us in, in some of this work. So perhaps following in footsteps might be an efficient way to deal with, with some of those changes. Also, we're not the only municipality and county in, in this situation. So perhaps there's opportunity for potential collaboration with other counties nearby in developing some policy framework. And, and I think there are some potential benefits in, in taking that approach, and we've outlined that within the, the report that if we were to pursue a county energy policy OPA, it could address best as well as other elements of a modernized energy system, such as those renewable energy systems that are going to be coming up for procurement shortly here. And in preparing such an OPA, we really would have an opportunity then to, to look at and integrate those climate change action plan objectives that we have in place to figure out how, how they fit and how we kind of balance factors around those proposals in the future. So finally, just wanted to kind of tease out the specific recommendations of the report. So firstly, providing this report to council for information, we do suggest that it be shared with the local municipalities for information. And again, that appendancy, the appendix to the report really outlines a lot of the detail and resources that we found that could help with some zoning provisions, for example. And then finally, it's our suggestion that the Warden prepare a letter to the province requesting that they develop an energy land use policy guideline. And to Scott's comment about, you know, 444 municipalities each doing this research and developing a policy framework independently, we could end up with a fairly inconsistent approach across our municipalities, which may not help us move towards our energy modernization goals. And so I think the idea there is that such a document would put that ball back into the province's court to, to have them provide us with suggestions on how that technology should be handled and teasing out some of those considerations around where we'll need to balance factors, right? Some of the, the broader provincial priorities around energy modernization versus some of the protection requirements that we have in place for our agricultural lands and natural heritage resource lands. And how do we go about balancing that on a, on a one-off basis? So I, I will leave it there. I think between Scott and I, we'd be happy to address any questions that, that council may have. And I encourage you all to, to take some time with that report. And definitely the appendix includes some really good information for the local tiers. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Indeed, it is a very comprehensive report. A lot of information there. Any questions for this? Counselor Kentner?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Warden. Liz, I have a couple of questions. And the first one is, do you have any sense of the scale of the unit that has been proposed for the municipality of Meaford?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not familiar with this specific application, no.
I have a sense that it's not, it, it's not a necessarily a mini application. I think it is perhaps a moderate-sized one, or so I, I'd like to know more about that as soon as we can. And, and I, do you have any sense of what kind of timeline? Like, I, I, I think the report is excellent, and I certainly support the three recommendations, and primarily number three. But I, I would like to have some sense of how long we have before we need to dive into this and, and actually, you know, protect ourselves. Thank you.
I think, thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Counselor Kentner, I appreciate those questions. And I, and I think how long, I guess, is the question. So, so as I mentioned, we just received the press release this morning from the province indicating that they've concluded the largest battery energy storage procurement in Canada's history. And speaking to kind of the scale of that procurement, it was my understanding that the various contracts to be awarded through that procurement are to be announced here shortly. And so I haven't clicked on all of the elements of that press release, but I suspect there's likely some additional information in that document as well. I think for the battery energy storages, that's, those are likely to come on fairly quickly. My understanding is, is that, you know, we've got consultations in, in process for some of those facilities ongoing. Regarding the renewables, my understanding is that next intake is likely to be issued towards December of this year. And those would be awarded next year. So, so we've got a little bit longer on the renewables front, but with the battery energy storages, I think, I think we're getting pretty close to, to when you may be seeing applications come forward for those uses. So, so completing those zoning reviews to understand how your local provisions apply, I think, is really kind of a top priority in that regard. Just determining, yeah, what is in place right now and how, if an application showed up on the door tomorrow, what is the process then that would apply based on those provisions you've got in place already?
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Scott, do you want to make a comment there, please?
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Just to Counselor Kentner's question, the proposal in Meaford, at least as it stood as of late last year, was for 100-megawatt battery energy storage facility, and it was on approximately 15 acres. And, and just add one further nuance to everything Liz has shared. The proposal in Meaford adjacent to the city of Own Sound is actually in the Niagara Escarpment Plan area. And, and this is in a, an area of the Niagara Escarpment where development control hasn't been lifted. So they would be required at a minimum to go through a development permit application process. And further to Liz's comments about all the consultation that went into this report, one of the other bodies that was consulted was, of course, the Niagara, Niagara Escarpment Commission staff.
Thank you, Scott. Are you finished, Counselor Kentner? Okay, Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks for the report. Couple of things. There is a working group, the Multimunicipal Energy Working Group, that has been taking more discussion around this item. So I don't feel, want to feedback the correspondence in our earlier part of our agenda. My, my other point that I want to raise though is, should this be circulated to our agriculture advisory? I mean, obviously where the location is, or at some point, wherever that is, because you're talking about land, right? And it's either rural or ag or whatever. It's, you know, for example, 15 acres. So should there be some feedback from that group? So I just throw that out there for thoughts.
Yeah, I would agree 100%. And I see Scott nodding that we'll circulate this to the egg advisory committee for feedback from them, for sure. Any other questions? Counselor Greg?
Thank you, Warden. And just wanted to thank Liz and Stephanie's name as well, I see on the report header. I found it extremely informative, working my way through this report in terms of how staff have identified and show how they respond to an emerging differing land use, such as the BES and the challenges that it seems to generate. So firstly, I wanted to mention that I thought it was a great report to, to work through and become more informed on. The one, I guess from the origin, when it came to the provincial policy statement and neighboring municipalities get to comment within a kilometer or, and be circulated and comment on, on land use changes within a kilometer of municipal borders. My concern with this technology was that it could certainly demonstrate municipalities really going into conflict with each other because of the impacts across borders and needing that letter of municipal support and, and having the neighboring municipality really affirming and standing up for residents within that municipality and the impacts that they were concerned with, whether it was well water or fire, some of these different environmental conditions. So it looks like the province is looking at responding a little bit better to that condition, whereas they were not previously, like it just totally dismissed other planning matters where municipalities had the opportunity to comment on this one, it seemingly that they did not, or if they did, it was just dismissed. Is the, I feel like they're becoming more receptive to listening to those concerns of neighboring municipalities. Am I correct with, with that assumption?
Liz, do you want to respond to that, please?
Sure. And Scott, feel free to jump in if, if you like. You know, I think so through the IESO process, you know, I think they're rolling out quite a comprehensive procurement process, and I expect that that will be the case for this next intake as well. We are already starting to see inquiries coming for that next intake. So those discussions are already happening. And, and I think you make a fair point, Counselor, that if it's coming forward for that kind of in-principle support through a municipal support resolution upfront, there isn't necessarily a circulation or, or broader discussion with surrounding municipalities about the issuance of that municipal support resolution. I don't know that there's necessarily a process or framework established to address that. However, depending on how you do ultimately decide to regulate those uses in your municipality, there, there may well then be a Planning Act trigger for that circulation. For example, if zoning were prohibitive and a zoning amendment were required for those facilities. So, so it might be a little bit later in the process. And perhaps there is an opportunity there that as municipalities are sharing those support resolutions, you know, if those could be forwarded up to the county and/or perhaps to your neighbors in, in good faith, perhaps that is, is a good approach there. But yeah, not, not understanding that there's specifically a formal process through the intakes or around those municipal support resolutions to, to bring in your neighbors into that conversation. Fair point that you raise.
Thank you, Liz. I guess it just demonstrates the value of being friendly across the fence before you actually need to be friendly. Any other questions? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Liz, thanks for your report. Certainly a lot of valuable information. I'm just wondering, is anyone particularly looking at, you know, Hydro One looked at setbacks for their infrastructure. Is there any provincial body, I thought the Fire Marshal's Office may be doing this, but the actual setbacks from, from residential properties? What government authority is going to be making recommendations on what safe setbacks would be? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, so we, we've tried to address that a little bit in the report. That, that's where that lack of a technical framework really, really is a prominent consideration. Because when we look at some of that accepted industry standard, so one of the, the, the major comparators, I guess, in the United States, they have some standards that apply to best. And they, they talk about scale-dependent setbacks. So for larger systems, they, they have requirements for, for water storages and fire suppression, and they classify systems as being remote if they are 100 feet or 30, 30 meters away from a sensitive user lot line. And at that remote situation, then they start to remove requirements from, from what that system has to include or what that site has to include. So you know, I think they're saying that a 30-meter setback for those larger systems is probably a good starting point. If you're going closer, then the requirements might amp up in terms of safety documentation or site interventions for the use. I would suggest that you take a look at that, the American Planning Association zoning practice. It is linked within the appendix of the report, and they've identified some thresholds as a suggestion starting point. But again, we don't have great direction from, from the province or through any embedded standards here in, in Canada or Ontario to really set that out. And, and that's where I think that guidance from the province would be really handy to have is, yeah, what's our starting point? Because otherwise, they're talking about a three-meter setback to lot lines. And I don't know that that necessarily satisfies some of the concerns that we've heard from the public around safety consideration or comfort for, for the citing of those uses.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Well, I know you're not, but yeah, yeah, I know. I, I, I hear you for sure. Any other questions? You know, call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. That is carried. Thank you very much. I I understand lunch is here. We have another report and then well, two more reports. We have the two consent items. We have an in camera session. I'm thinking we should break for lunch. And come back, so let's see if we can be back here. We'll try to be back before. One o'clock. Okay, we recess for lunch. Thanks, Rob. I guess I just noticed that Dane and Peter aren't, oh, there's Dane. There he is in. Live and in color. We'll just maybe better wait for a minute to get Peter back online. What's that? Now, where's your hat, Dane? There we go, all right.
Far from my head, sir, never.
Fair enough, fair enough. We'll just wait a minute for Peter to come back. I think I probably said one o'clock today. Somebody was arguing with me that I said quarter two, but. We'll just wait for Peter to.
I had a, tell a quick joke if I can, sir. We're always waiting for Peter anyways.
Please go ahead and remove the temptation from someone else doing it.
Gray Highlands had a wonderful meeting with Ministry of Parks and Recreation. We get into the meeting and gentleman there is like, we had a great meeting a couple of years ago with Gray Highlands, and you look very familiar. The deputy mayor kind of looks familiar, and I reached over, grabbed my hat, put on my head, and he went, it is you.
True story. Yeah, great. Hey, I see Peter has rejoined us. Thank you, Peter. Call the meeting back to order. At one o'clock. The next report we are going to consider is the report from the Clerks Department. Tara will be presenting it regarding community awareness campaign policy. Would someone care to move to receive? Counselor Pringle and Counselor Dickert. Welcome, Tara.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In nineteen ninety-five, Gray County Council passed a resolution or statement that noted Gray County does not make or declare any sort of proclamation. This has been the position that has been in effect for roughly thirty years, so since it has remained unchanged since that time. Staff are bringing it forward today just to get feedback from you and discuss with council on whether that is something you'd like to change. And to stray from that policy position of not making proclamations, or if you'd like to implement a policy that deals with requests. And subsequently declare some proclamations in accordance with the policy. The draft is attached to the report for your review and consideration, and it outlines processes around flag raisings. Building illumination and proclamations and includes the approval criteria. And application process associated with the draft policy. Further to this, the Gray Roots Strategic Plan does note Gray Roots as being a future community cultural center. So there is plans for a distinct standalone community flag pole at Gray Roots in the future. But in the meantime, if this policy or a version of it is endorsed. The municipal flag pole at Gray Roots is proposed to be the interim community flag pole until such time as a permanent one is established. So the draft is attached for your consideration, and it does propose that the warden be delegated the authority to approve. Requests under the policy, just in the interest of timing and efficiency. So I'm happy to take any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Tara. Counselor Mattressos.
Thank you. Through the warden, I do have a couple of questions. Well. The philosophical point I'd I'd be interested in hearing in discussion is. Each individual or or group or organization within our county is. Starts somewhere within a lower tier municipality, so so there is always an avenue of going and saying we would like to create community awareness, and if that organization. Worked across the county, they could go to each of the each of the municipalities and ask that same question. So I I I look at it from the lens of one organization. Is is under two jurisdictions, but the the reach and the outreach and the awareness can be done on that lower tier. The question I have is, is there, in preparing this report, do you have some insight, if I can put the question to the clerk? If do you have some insight on what's been done between upper and lower tier in other other regions and other counties? I would be interested to know.
That is a really good question, and I don't have any information on that offhand of the how their upper and lower tiers. Manage between the two, and with regards to your first point, but it's certainly a consideration where. This isn't intending to encroach on any municipals municipalities treatment of how you handle. Similar requests in your municipality, but certainly. It's been a long time since this has been reviewed, so we just didn't really know where County Council wanted to.
Thank you. Any other? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just a couple of comments with regards to proclamations. I know we in Gray Highlands, we. For years and years and years didn't declare any proclamations. But then we had a lady named Agnes McPhail. And we decided to have Agnes McPhail, they were proclaim that. And then we have also proclaimed February as Black History Month, so some so sometimes you start to look. Okay, so it starts to you start to look at. But I know it sometimes can be a slippery slope, but we have made those. Proclamations because we feel it's important and and those type of things. With regards to flag raising, we have developed a flag. Policy with regards to a process, we have a separate flag pool for. Separate. Months, you know, it could be Black History Month, or it could be Pride, you know, they're separate, but we do have a separate, we do have a policy that I don't know if you wish to take a look at or whatever. We've developed it for a few years, but there is a process. On making that request and the duration of that and stuff like that, but anyway, just just bring those as a couple of examples that we've sort of experienced.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Counselor Greg.
Well, not so much a question. I guess I just don't. foresee a need for us to undertake the change in policy. I'm actually quite happy with the policy as it stands currently. I think it's excellent that the lower tiers can each have their own community flag and and proclamation. And awareness policies, but I think here, while it is easy to say there's not a cost. There is always a hidden cost. There can be a hidden expectation. Whether it's the warden from Hanover or Southgate or West Gray that's traveling an hour then to attend. A flag raising, there there does become an expectation that dignitaries are there, that maybe staff are there. I do get to. See the volume of requests that certainly come before the city of One Sound. And I don't need to speak further to it because we've heard of four. Excellent causes today during the council meeting. Of recognizing worthy groups who make terrific contributions, so it's a slippery slope that. Just becomes grease real quick because it just is a proliferation of of requests. So I think the easier thing here to do is to maintain the policy as it is and and actually not open up a bit of a Pandora's box. To trying to satisfy what becomes many, many different requests from different groups, all all of. All being very worthy, but I don't think it's a door that I'm comfortable opening.
Thank you, sir. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden, and I agree with my colleagues. This is a slippery slope. There are so many worthy organizations and awareness campaigns. That they're all deserving of recognition. Just going online last night, looking at the Government of Canada website, there's probably more awareness and heritage days. On the the website than there are months or weeks of the year. And those are the ones that I was able to to glean quite quickly. And I feel that this puts the warden, whomever the warden is at the day, in a position of. Making a decision for or against an organization which may be supported or not. Another warden might, in a future year, might support or deny that request, and. I feel that this is best left to the lower tier municipalities to decide on their their. Role in recognizing these awareness campaigns, flag raising and proclamations. I think our policy is adequate as it is. And I I just feel that. Like today, we recognized several very worthy awareness days. And there were at least three others that have been, you know, this past weekend, so where do we draw the line? So I I wouldn't be supporting the change at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Mackey and then Counselor Carlton.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I I agree with my colleagues on the other side. I think the issue comes when you don't agree with maybe a group that. Others would, and how do you justify if you've already done it for a number and saying no to someone else, so. I think it's better just to stay the way we are.
Fair enough. Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I too would agree. The one that comes to mind for me would be June as Pride Awareness Month and Indigenous. Relations Month, which one do you give priority to? So I don't think we want to get caught in having to choose one over the other.
Thank you. Counselor Boddy.
Thank you, Warden. I'd just be worried that someone would show up and want us to put up a Toronto Maple Leaf flag.
I I I should have anticipated that coming from you, sir. CEO Windgrove.
I'd just like to thank, first of all, clerks for the work that went into looking into this. As Tara mentioned, it's been thirty years since we revisited this policy, and we continue to get. Requests all the time, and when it's been that long since you've confirmed a decision. You know, there starts to be a question, maybe we're saying yes or no, without really having a strong basis from which. To make that determination, so I think we're really grateful to hear that there is good consensus around the table. I think that makes it much easier. For the Clerks Department and myself to be able to respond appropriately when groups come to us, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Kim, and just to be clear, it has been more than thirty years since the Leafs won the cup. Fair point, right? Counselor Mattressos.
Uh, thank you, and and given that there are other counties that do recognize and do have their own proclamation process. I I would think that it would be it would be beneficial to the residents and the organizations of our of of all of our nine municipalities within Gray County. If there were something something that addressed it on the website saying, you know, this policy. If if this policy, if the motion that's been put fails and we continue to go with the nineteen ninety-five policy. Letting them know and giving them the list of all the clerks of the nine municipalities, you know, here, here's where you can go for to spread your your awareness. Nowhere across the county. I think we can be supportive in that way without making our own independent proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor. The motion on the floor is to support the change. So I'm asking for those in favor to indicate. Opposed, if any. That motion fails. Thank you, Tara, for the report, and as Kim said, thank you for the feedback. Okay, I'm wondering. If if council would indulge, we'll deal with the two consent items first, then we'll go to the the final report, which is related to the. Close session report as well. So the first. Was Counselor Greg had asked for further discussion on six E, which is correspondence from the town of Godrich. Oh, here here it is. Regarding Ontario Works and ODSP rates. Counselor Greg, would you like to speak or make? What did you want to do with that? Do you want to? Support that, or do you want to make a change, or tell us what you'd like to do with that, sir?
Well, I would support it with an amendment. That under therefore be it resolved that the town of Godrich requests the provincial government to urgently one. Amend the wording at least double to increase Ontario Works and ODSP, everything else remaining the same. Not comfortable with at least double. I view that as somewhat simplistic, but there is also, there's a relationship. That exists between the supports and the the general economy as a whole. We have information from. County resource last year that the median household income is seventy-eight thousand dollars, so it's always a balancing seventy-eight thousand dollars in Gray County. It's always a balancing act determining that fine line of of establishing reasonable reasonable supports that we can afford with. Still encouraging people to to be employed and to seek employment. Ontario Works is meant to be a financial bridging program that still encourages people to get. To be looking for for unemployment. And the wording of at least double. Is pretty vague to me and and cause concern, so that's where I'm coming from. I think the wording to increase, I think we all. Are certainly aware of the requirement to increase the financial supports for people on Ontario Works and ODSP. And further index it and support people where they need to be supported, but I just was not comfortable with that least double. I think it lacked. Any good data in some sort of an appendix or. Similar to to support the resolution that they they forwarded.
Thank you, sir. So if I understand correctly, you're moving the motion with the amendment in there with the change of wording. Correct? Okay, is there a second for that motion? Counselor Mackey, any discussion? Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you, and while I support the amendment, I just wondered the wording of the first clause where it says regarding. Thank you. And while I support the amendment, I just wondered, uh, the wording of the first clause where it says regarding an increase. That, that we received the correspondence and resolution from the town of Godrich regarding this. But we are not supporting it verbatim. Perhaps the clerk could enlighten us as to would that be required to be changed because we're not actually supporting it as it was written. We're supporting it with a minor amendment.
Thank you for the question, Counselor DeBreen. So what I would suggest is, um, if the motion on the floor carries. Staff will follow up with a letter noting support, um, sort of in principle around the town of Godrich's resolution, resolution. With the change in wording that has been put forward by, um, Counselor Gregg.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, that is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Gregg. Next was the six I, which correspondence from South Bruce Gray Health Center. Regarding the Durham Hospital acute inpatient beds, Counselor Eccles requested that to be pulled. Counselor Eccles.
Uh, thank you very much. Mr. Warden. And as I said earlier, there was a paragraph in there. Concerning, uh. Some verbiage that I had, uh. Said at a council meeting in West Gray. Um, it was a West Gray council meeting. I have since, uh. Issued a, uh, an apology to those, uh, that I offended. That part I want to say, but the second part of it is just not, you know. Trying to figure out why it's here. Um, it's addressed to me. It's not addressed to, it's addressed to the mayor of the municipality of West Gray. I guess it was sent here and whatnot. Uh, we were dealing with some of it. But it, to the point where. It's interesting that. South Bruce Gray Health Center. Is looking for and to trying to engage the county of Gray. Apparently all municipalities in Gray and Bruce. Uh, on this, on a specific topic. With their stakeholders. Yet. The topic of transitioning the bids and everything else. Has been totally. Uh, absent from their consultation with any stakeholders. Um, I appreciate the letter that, uh. You penned, Mr. Warden, with Gray County support and concern. I think that's in six F. Or six G. That, uh, towards the president and the chair of the board. I'm wondering whether there can be another response, a follow-up on this that we're still waiting for consultation. Um, with this. Uh, that's the topic that I would like to bring up onto this is. Further communications, uh, from Gray County. Because I don't believe we have yet to receive any. A. On what this is going to mean. To the investment in the long-term care community that's being put into place. Uh, the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace. And B. When the announcement came out and we had a chance to ask a couple of questions. I asked specifically whether Gray County had been consulted. And the response I got was, oh, yes. About the added beds, it's going to be with redevelopment. Was a follow-up question. Oh, oh. There's more beds? Yes, there's a hundred beds, but this isn't a maintenance thing. This is a brand-new building. Oh, the president said to me, that was her answer to that. And to the EMS station, she interjected and told me that. Yes, oh, we've consulted. The EMS station will be staying right at the, where it is. That won't be affected by any of this transitioning of the beds. Said, well, obviously, then you haven't consulted. Because Gray County a month ago, two months ago, we're going to redevelop. The EMS station isn't going to be at the hospital. And the response I got from that and can be verified was, really? I want to get to where some of the truth is because. On one hand, oh, yes, we've talked to everybody. And quite factually, no, they haven't talked to anybody about this. Um. And I feel. The Gray County is being disrespected. Um, in this, and we need to be able to get to the engagement of what this is going to mean. Not to, not to West Gray, not to Durham, not to West Gray, but to Gray County, and as I said earlier, the rural healthcare. Um. This is a key blow if we continue on in the fact we're, how we are. So I'd request, um, under your signature again, Mr. Warden, that reach out. And, uh, to South Bruce Gray to have some communication. And I would suggest even invite. The chair and/or the president as well to, uh. Come and give us a delegation of what is really and truly. Happening with this, uh, health delivery. The provincial health delivery, uh, in West Gray, in Durham in particular. And the effects that that's going to, how they're going to mediate, uh, mediate the, or the effects on. The rest of the local hospitals. I know the effect that it's having on the Hanover Hospital right at the present moment with, uh. And that hasn't been compensated or looked at, you know, the effect that it's certainly having. Uh, and can have on the new Martell Hospital, Chesley Hospital. And I think we need to get to the bottom of this sooner than later, what those effects are going to be.
Thank you, sir. So what I heard was that you want the correspondence to be received with further follow-up as you described it, and Kim has taken some notes here. Very good.
Strongly worded correspondence. Yes, thank you.
It will be, uh, as appropriate. Sir, second for that motion, Counselor McQueen. Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor McQueen.
Uh, maybe discussion after this motion is dealt with, but I would think. The degree of, of severity and, and, and concern about this whole issue. I would suggest that, uh, we need to go directly to the Ministry of Health. Maybe a delegation on your request. Some of us neighboring mayors of Toronto and take it right to the top. Because if, if, uh, Counselor Eccles is saying, what he said earlier on today, it's a concern across not just Durham Hospital across rural Ontario, maybe we need to. Go directly, and I'm certainly with you, willing to be part of that delegation if need be. So just food for thought.
Thank you, sir, and we'll definitely look into that. Counselor Matrasovs.
Thank you. Three, the warden, just, I will ask for some clarification on, on the wording of what, what has been moved and seconded because I did hear. Uh, Counselor Eccles referred to the request to have them come and make a deputation. I think that would be very valuable, so I just. Wanted to know that that was embedded in the, the moved and seconded motion. And, um, the other part of it at two is if in this, as this is committee, the whole, and we'll have council coming up. I'm just wondering if we can find out as much as we can through our rural caucus, you know, to be able to, to look to AMO and, and connect as quickly as possible. To the other scenarios going across the province, if that might be a, 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 a way of accelerating. Uplifting, um, our voice. Thank you.
Absolutely. Counselor DeBreen.
Through you, and to that point, I think that although June is a long way away in. In respect to this issue, I can certainly raise this at County Caucus at the AMO Annual General Meeting in June. Uh, the twenty. Whatever day is the warden's form. Yeah, thank you. I can do that.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody that wants to raise it at any venue is, well, are encouraged to do that. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, that is carried. Thank you very much. Um. So, okay, we move on then to the final report on the agenda. Paul, Counselor McQueen, go ahead.
Just following up the point I raised, do you need a motion on with regards to? Uh, that I'd like to have maybe a little conversation around that part of, of making that delegation to the Ministry of Health. Sometimes you have to address it. You have to that in June, like you don't want to wait till June. I know we have AMO coming up in August, but that may be down the road and, and so, but I'm, I, I've been, I've had it. I've had been involved with a direct visit to Toronto before on certain circumstances. And I don't know if you need a motion for that, or there, or there needs to be conversation, but I think if. This is came up, we need to address it ASAP. And, and, and sometimes you let things slide, it doesn't get addressed. I know it, fortunately here in, in, uh, uh, Owen Sound. Uh, was it two thousand and twenty? Thereabouts when the announcement that the Georgian College was going to a four-year accredited nursing program. That's a great thing for our area, for getting nurses in our area, but it's only completed year two. There's still two more years before you get graduates. From that program, and, uh, so it's going to take time. So. Anyway, I, I'm just surprised because I, I sat on a hundred hospital board for twelve years. And I'm very surprised because usually the hospital, um, board or association is very in tune with the province. And why there hasn't been this letter, it doesn't really speak to that. And so I, I, I just say that I think there needs to be a little bit pressure. Genuine pressure put on to make, to, to investigate or make that delegated request, and that sometimes you got to discordate to the, right? And they are in-house till what, middle of June? Right? So there's time to do that, and, uh, so I don't have other conversation or discussion on that. I don't know. But I think it's important because I think it's important that this is happening to a couple of hospitals, but. Could happen to a lot of our hospitals too. I know that there's pressure on staffing, but there's usually other, like, we're always with doctors. But collectively, sometimes we work together, we come up with local solutions, right? So. I don't know. So what, what do you, what do you suggest?
I would suggest that if you want to make a motion to that effect, we can certainly work that. Thank you, sir, that we seek a, a direct delegation with, with Minister Health at her office. Okay, is there a second? Counselor DeBreen, discussion? All those in favor, that is carried. We will, uh. We will follow that trail and, and see what we can do there. Okay. Final report this morning is, or this afternoon now, I guess, is the Town of Blue Mountains Booster Station. I note that both, uh, the deputy mayor and the mayor of Blue Mountains have declared a peculiar interest in this matter. They have now left the meeting or are leaving the meeting. Pat is here to give the report on Gray Road nineteen and Gray Road twenty-one. Welcome, Pat. The floor is yours. Oh, wait, I need a mover and seconder. Counselor Pringle and Counselor Dickert, thank you. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, so this, this report is dealing directly with the memorandum of understanding for the booster station. So this is the nineteen twenty-one roundabout. Uh, I've been here many times talking about this project, how complicated, how many moving parts there are. Uh, but we're really trying to kind of focus in on, this is all about that MOU, uh, that we have with the Town of Blue Mountains. And this is the open section, and then, uh, there will be an in-camera, so I'm trying to, uh, stay with my open information here. Um, so on to the, oh, I'm in charge here, all right. So just to, this is the TRCW nineteen dash twenty-four. Uh, this is, as I said, about the roundabout project. And, and a big, uh, component of that project was that the new roundabout design required a booster station to be moved. Um, so we struck up an MOU, uh, with the Town of Blue Mountains. Um. To kind of agree on, basically it was to get a consultant on board. At that point, no design of that booster station. The new booster station had been done, so. It was getting our consultant that was doing the rest of our work to also design the booster station as it didn't make sense to have another consultant come in. Um, so at the time, we were on two million dollars. Uh, um, we were going to pay a portion of that, and the town was going to pay a million dollars of that. So. Um, since two thousand twenty-two, uh, the prices of the like-for-like have gone. And, and of course, the design is advanced too. So there's more details. Every time you figure a new detail, it costs money. So. Um, now, after watching that delegation this morning, I don't think the old ones are that bad after hearing that guy this morning, but, um. So we know the like-for-like has gone from what we thought was a couple million to two point nine million. And then there's been a lot of upgrades, um, to the booster station itself to get it up to basically a seven million dollar booster station. So here is just, uh, um, under the current MOU where the town was going to pay a million dollars towards this project. Uh, as you can see, it leaves, uh, uh, Gray County, um. Responsible for quite a large number, um, for an asset that isn't ours. So just for a little bit of background, there's kind of the before picture. Um, as you can see, pretty, uh, you know, nondescript booster station underground, uh, uh, the picture above there, and then. Uh, below is kind of the new booster station building that the town is, is pursuing. And we're not arguing that, that, uh, when you're doing a project of this size, it totally makes sense from the town's point of view, and, and we agree. They've got a lot of upsizing in there for future developments. Um, there's a lot of issues with those underground booster stations with confined space and all that type of thing that people have been trying to get away from. Um, so it's not that we disagree with the project they want to do, it's just, it is quite a significant change in scope, um, from what is there. Um, and that's about a twenty-year-old asset that was there. So, but that, this, we thought just kind of pictures, um, it's, it's quite a different setup. So then the report goes on to talk a little bit about cost sharing for utilities. So we, um. Have a lot of cost sharing, uh, arrangements with various utilities. Um, hydro, as it says in this chart here, uh, you know, would pay fifty percent of labor and labor-saving devices, so they would pay the material, for example. Um, but any, any municipality that's ever had a hydro relocation, um, bill come in, uh, it is hard to believe that. The bill is fifty percent of labor and labor-saving devices because it's usually, uh, fairly expensive, but that is the arrangement. Uh, Enbridge Gas, they will pay thirty-five percent of a total relocation, and basically. These utility relocation kind of sunset clauses, I guess, are, are just because. You know, we, we allow, uh, facilities to go in our right of way for, in everybody's interest, from cable to, you know, fiber, water, whatever. Um, but again, then should the, should the county be on the hook for any future changes that you can't see, you know, years and years in advance? So it's in, it's in page, uh, I think page five of the report. We have our own fiber agreement. Um, if, if we allowed a, a entity to put fiber in and in five years wanted to move it, we would pay for it. And it, and it, it reduces till after fifteen years. They can move it. They've had fifteen years of, uh, you know, free rent, I guess. Um, so that is kind of our general, uh, standing on utilities that, uh, as time goes on. Our responsibility of knowing that maybe the location wasn't the best where it's going, it kind of, uh, lessens. So there is a lot of, uh, outstanding little issues, and not all of them necessarily have to be totally tied in with the MOU, but they're all issues that. Concern Blue Mountains and concern us. So, uh, one is the fact that, um, as you can see, this picture isn't the greatest. Um, but the, the booster station now is right basically at the old roundabout. You can see on the air photo underneath. And the new booster station, they've moved to the south end of that T's Please property that they bought. So in essence, before they bought T's Please, we were going to have to buy a piece of property. We were going to do it near the corner of that property. To provide some room for the booster station. Um, them having bought T's Please kind of brought that out of the equation. We don't have to acquire a little piece now, but they will be using some of that land. So. They are giving up land that they paid for, for, uh, a location that we would have had to buy. So there is, I think, some merit in, in that issue. The next item is this, uh, in our traffic study, it mentioned in the, you know, X number of years as the traffic increases, there will be. Uh, an eastbound, uh, eastbound to southbound channel or auxiliary lane that would come in. As the roundabout gets busier and busier, it's going to divert that. That, uh, traffic, which is a very busy movement, obviously, on a, any weeknight when the, the, the ski change happens. You know, from day skiing to night skiing, a lot of people are leaving and they're heading home or whatever on Sunday night or whatever. Um, so that channel will someday be needed. It's a long way in the future, but we want to secure the land now, make sure there wasn't something built there. And then there's just this other outstanding land issue from Mountain House highlighted in blue. Uh, that was just land that was acquired through the site plan. Uh, for Mountain House that is still with the town. It was originally going to come to the county, just has never come to the county, so for various reasons. Um, so that is kind of an outstanding issue. Um, so that is kind of an outstanding issue out there. Um, so there's some talk you'll see in the report about a potential detour route uh, being Montero. Um, and it's important as, you know, this is such a big project. There's a potential four laning there. There's another roundabout at Crosswinds that uh, developers paying for. Um, we want people to be able to get where they're going. Not only residents, but there's a lot of tourism at the mountain. Um, nobody wants to wait half an hour construction. So there will be a lot of construction staging and detours. And and the town has, you know, mentioned their preference that maybe we put some money towards Montero. Um, we don't even know if that will be the detour. Uh, right now, ideally, you might send them in the highway. Uh, go in twenty six and down nineteen, the Montero and Gray Road twenty one and the Montero and Highway twenty, or the Highway gray or twenty one, Highway twenty six entrance. Our um, intersections are both stop controlled, which isn't great. The other ones are signals. Um, so we just uh, feel that uh, the town is going to do some work on Montero. They feel like they need to do it. It's been probably a long time coming. Um, so we just feel maybe it's not part of the project, but and um, there has been lots of discussions. We get together quite regularly, um, like every month, we have a meeting about this project and usually that comes up. Different people's projects, like are you going to do this before that goes? Or when is the bound, the resort going to do this job or when? So there's a lot of talk about timing and everything is kind of fluid as it goes on. One more thing, we didn't really have a slide for, but it's in the report on page nine, is about the gateway feature. Everybody seems uh, generally supportive of some sort of gateway feature. It's probably pretty low on our party list compared to just getting this booster station moved so we can build the the roadwork. Um, but it is an an item that's hanging out there that at some point we're going to have to figure out what that means. Um, and who who is kind of responsible for the project, but I I didn't mention it in my slides here. So our next steps are just uh, um, meeting with Town of Blue Mountains. We want to terminate the MOU, which it's in the in the MOU that we can terminate it with six months notice. As we feel it's just, the scope has just changed so drastically that it really doesn't apply anymore. So we'd be looking to start negotiations right away. Um, which we kind of already have a date set for hopefully um, with Blue Mountain to start working on a a new kind of more reasonable agreement for us and then maybe two.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, um, we do have a closed session related to this matter, so I'm thinking we should, oh, Counselor McQueen, go ahead.
Can you go back to that s- uh, screen that has the breakdown of the cost? Okay, and you were saying that Blue Mountains contribution is a million and Gray County's contribution is five point nine million. So that's part of the reason of starting from scratch and renegotiating. So how do we own something that it's really a municipal system? Which is part of the booster station, which is part of a, part of a municipal system that can you explain that or somebody explain that a little bit? Not here? Just just on a high level.
Uh, thank you for that question, uh, Counselor McQueen. So as it relates to the booster station, so the town owns owns the booster station. It's actually part of the Collingwood Water System. Um, but the town owns the the booster station, but it's it's in our right of way. And as Pat indicated, the booster station has to be relocated as a result of the roundabout project. Um, and then it's, yeah, so that's currently, that's what was um, the current arrangement in terms of who owns what. So it's it's the town's booster station, but it's triggered to be relocated as a result of this this roundabout project.
So the follow up with that, it's supporting the town of the mountains system. So upgrading upgrading that system is certainly bringing it up to, I can't remember how old it is, but it's it's bringing it up to a new level. It just seems like what, why are we upgrading that road? We're upgrading that road because of traffic, because of the development in that area, which is on water and sewer. I I I think I understand where you're coming from. It just this, there needs to be a bit more of a balanced approach, and I understand that's why we're it just seems out of whack.
Hence the need to go on camera and revisit the MOU. Counselor Greg.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, you referred to gateway um, landscaping uh, features. Are there any other locations in the county where the uh, where you could exemplify the counties undertaken gateway features similar to uh, what has been requested or contemplated uh, in this instance?
Um, I'm not totally familiar with those, but I know that I know there is a lot of uh, uh, features, welcome to Gray, live, you know, all those kind of things. There are a lot of those entrances. There there isn't really one in one location, and Blue Mountains was kind of the the initiator of the gateway idea. Um, to say you're arriving, but then our thinking was you're also arriving to Simcoe. And you're also arriving to Collingwood, and you're also arriving to Gray County and Blue Mountains. So that's kind of where it came out of, and it's just a chance for everyone to kind of know uh, where you are. And everyone knows those gateway features, you know, y'all, you know, going into Gravenhurst, there's that gateway there. And I I think it's just that type of thing. Most of the places we have signs. We don't really have anything quite that elaborate. Um, but I mean, I see the merit of it from tourism and it's a recognizable uh, feature. We don't know what it is though, right?
And I would just add that um, the the roundabout that's closest to the resort has the landscaping inside the roundabout, right? Which actually Blue Mountain Resort takes care of, but it's our property. So I think that's a little bit maybe how this started. So when you think about the millions of people that are coming into the into the resort every year, I think there's some kind of heightened focus on making sure that they like we're kind of optimizing the experience, and I think that's part of where this comes from.
A little thing that just come into my mind at the Good Roads Conference, there was a session on safety, road safety and different things. And one of the things that he said in that presentation was you don't want items in the middle of your roundabout because you want people looking to your lap to see who's coming on the roundabout. You don't, you don't want them looking up here at a sign. You want them looking over there to see where the traffic is coming from. Anyway, just a little thing just popped into my mind from that session. So I did learn something, a good roads, just just let the minutes reflect that the warden learned something. Anyway, um, yeah, he's trainable. That's right. He can be led. He can follow direction occasionally. All right, uh, I think we're ready to go into closed session. There will be lots of opportunity when we come back into open session for more questions as well. Uh, so I need a motion to go into closed session. Counselor Hutchison, Counselor DeBreen, all those in favor, that is carried. Thank you, Rob. We are now back in open session and I can confirm that we only discussed that an item that was listed on the in camera agenda. So we have, is there any other business? Well, we need to uh, vote on the actual report. Did we have a mover mover and seconder on that? Yes, we did. Any further discussion on the report? Call the question. All those in favor, that is carried. Thank you. Now, is there any other business? Nope. Any notice of motion? Nope. One motion more. Counselor Eccles, seconded by Counselor Patterson, that we adjourn. All those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Enjoy the rest of the day.